Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second regular monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my Black United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is a regular meeting of the board. It is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon anyone in attendance who may have a question or brief comment. There are copies of the meeting's agenda to my left, as well as a set of the materials we'll be acting on today. We have a number of relatively ministerial items under new business, of which I know there are a number of people here today, some of them from the business community. And at the appropriate time, I'm going to request we move to take up those items first and then revert back to the old business. Item number two is approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on October 10th. Entertain any corrections, adjustments, changes to those. If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Without objection. Quickly on updates. Kind of a retrospective in looking ahead over the last week since our last meeting. We celebrated Columbus Day here at Town Hall, also with the St. Lawrence Society over in Koskow. I had the pleasure of visiting North Mayanis School to celebrate. They're being named a National Blue Ribbon School. It's one of four designated national blue ribbon schools in Connecticut. I had the pleasure of celebrating with the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades. And I have to tell you what a wonderful group of students, very attentive, very polite, and certainly a testament to the leadership under Angela Schmidt, as well as the teachers there. Just a great school community, and we're very proud of their recognition. On Monday, I attended the annual Breast Cancer Alliance fundraising luncheon. This is an entity where I serve on the Advisory Board. Their attendance this year, I think, exceeded all prior years with 1,100 attendees, and they raised over $2 million. So we're very proud of the BCA with its origins here in the town of Greenwich. And the results of their efforts have national and international consequence because they do fund critical research in the area of early identification of this insidious disease. Yesterday, we hosted the Old Greenwich School 3rd graders. There were more than 60 students and their teachers right here in this room. They had some very well-thought-out questions. I thought some of their questions at the end I will share only because I often think that children are reflective of their parents. So naturally, they wanted to know, "Well, how much money do you make?" Okay, well, that's public. I told them. Then it's like, "Well, how much money do you have? What kind of car do you drive?" I said, "Wow." I go, "They're learning young," you know? So I share that with you because it's good questions catch me off-guard, but I thought, "Boy, 3rd grade." So today is actually an exciting day for us, not just because we're here with you, but there's something that takes place annually here in this town, and it's at Julian Curtis Elementary School. And that's the annual United Nations Day celebration. There are going to be over 60 countries represented by the students. It's truly, I think, one of the symbolic expressions of the diversity in this town. And it's really wonderful to see through the children. And so we certainly look forward to being there, I believe, at 1:00 today to celebrate with them and really express our endorsement for what they, in fact, do. Coming up on November 1st, we will be swearing in Greenwich Fire Department recruit Scott Toolings. That will take place at 10:30 a.m. at the Greenwich Public Safety Complex in the Fire Department Administration area. And then next week, let's see, to the week after, is the Second Annual Greenwich Economic Forum taking place. This week, back today, once again, we'll be celebrating Experience Greenwich Week. This is a program that focuses on exploring and shopping and dining here in the town in our very distinctive neighborhoods of Old Greenwich, Koskow, Byram, Glenville. There are pamphlets like this, 125 participating merchants. There's also going to be a designated trick-or-treating for young children who perhaps don't have the facility to go out within their neighborhood. So again, encourage participation. Saturday, October 26th, 10 to 12, and then 4 to 6, there's trick-or-treating townwide with participating merchants and restaurants. That, I believe, concludes the updates. Oh, one final one. Actually, we have a new person working in our offices. The staff assistant or customer service representative position, it's a union position, was filled, and we have Angie Krauth-- Kather. So if you hear a new voice, it's Angie Kather. She comes to us from Hamilton Avenue School, where she had worked for a number of years. And for those of you who've interfaced with the OFS and the Selectmen's Office know that that person really is the linchpin in terms of communication, taking in information, giving out information. So I just want to publicly make that known, that Angie is that person, and certainly wish her well. And if you call, have a little patience. She's getting to know the ropes here, but she was very active within the school community working there. Okay, we have item four, but as I said, to be respectful of the business owners here and some of the more routine administrative items, I'd like to entertain a motion to take up new business prior to old business so that we can facilitate those folks getting on their way.
So moved.
Without objection. So we have with us David Med from Aquarian, and you have some work that needs to be done to maintain your systems and require a detour. Yes, if you may, could you quickly give us the reasons?
Sure. We have a transfer pump that's located in Rockwood Reservoir off of North Street. This pump transfers water from Rockwood to Putnam Reservoir. It's failed. We require a crane to remove it and place a new pump in it. So we requested the road closure permit for next Tuesday.
Okay. That is from, on Tuesday, October 29th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., and you anticipate two to three hours.
Correct.
And I imagine you will have some type of police--
Correct. Yeah, we usually, whenever we do that, we have the Greenwich Police provide the detour. And there is a bypass right on North Street where this is working, so it won't require a complete closure.
And that's the reservoir if you're driving--
North Street, right on the--
To the right, right? So just a curiosity question. So having driven up there a couple times, are the levels there impacted by this, or is that as a result of this capacity?
No, it's capacity. And also, we have gravity transfer normally, but during certain high-demand periods, or if we need to move more water to submersible pumps, an auxiliary pump that allows to transfer a little more water during certain periods.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve that one-day detour.
Two to three hours.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. With that objection, thank you, Dave. We also have coming up Veterans Day, and that certainly is a very poignant moment for us and for the town, and we do acknowledge it. And there's been an annual gathering organized by the American Legion for a Veterans Day Community Walk and Ceremony. And that also necessitates a road closure. So we have with us Irv Porter, who has submitted to us the request, which states that Post 29 will be leading the procession from Amagerone intersection at Greenwich Avenue to the World War I Memorial near Restoration Hardware. And that will begin at 10:15, and should last till noon. I know that the ceremony each year is designed to be on 11/11 at 11:00, and that goes back, gosh, decades. So do you have anything else, Mr. Porter, that you could--
It's on the 11th.
Yes, which is a Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman, First Selectman. My name is Irv Porter. I'm here on behalf of Commander of the American Legion Post 29, who is responsible for the patriotic aspect of the service that is performed in Greenwich on Veterans Day. The First Selectman had all of the details correct, and I'm here simply to formalize our request for the Police Department to shut down the lower part of Greenwich Avenue and to allow the public and those that are supporters of Veterans Day to walk down from the corner of Amagerone and the avenue to the World War I Memorial, which I still know as the memorial next to the post office. It has to be properly changed to be reflective of where it is in front of Restoration Hardware. So I'm here simply to ask for your endorsement and support of the Police Department carrying out its mission to shut off the lower part of the avenue, and for us to have an appropriate ceremony at the World War I Monument. That's it. I request that you support it, okay?
Thank you. It's been moved? Okay, without objection. Thank you, Mr. Porter. The next item we have is from the Parking Services, and we have Deputy Chief Mark Marino here to present this. There were two areas within the Town Hall Annex parking lot. For those who do not know, the Town Hall Annex is a residence for moderate-income people. The town leased to the Housing Authority back in the '80s. And as we've seen the transformation of the area with the Public Safety Complex, both police and fire, there's been some ambiguities as to how those spaces are utilized. I believe your request, based upon reading them today, was to bring them into conformity with conditions that were granted for the various approvals of use, and to also help address some issues related to parking at the Agnes Morley location by bringing up spaces here for their staff to park.
Very well said. Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of Parking Services to address the Town Hall Annex parking lot. Currently, the parking lot, which consists of 26 parking spaces-- There's 26 parking spaces there. During the construction of the Public Safety Complex, police and fire, that parking lot was used as an auxiliary parking area and also a construction staging area during the construction of the Fire Department. Planning and zoning commission's intentions were that upon completion of the construction, that 18 parking spaces in that lot would be returned for public use, which is what we intend to do. It is a prime location for long-term 12-hour parking for employees that work in the central Greenwich Business District so that they can, you know, not take up spaces on Greenwich Avenue. And so our intention is to have the 18 spaces, including one handicap space for public parking, 12-hour limit, and that would be payable through our Park Mobile phone app. And we've also had requests from the Fire Department and also from the Housing Authority for additional spaces in that parking lot. Housing Authority staff would be allocated for parking spaces to alleviate some of the parking congestion at Agnes Morley. And the Fire Department would be allocated for spaces, you know, for volunteers or visitors that are, have business at the Fire Headquarters building. So that pretty much sums up our request.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request that 18 spaces in the lot be made available for public use, and that four spaces be restricted for use by the Fire Department personnel, and four spaces restricted for use by the Housing Authority of the town of Greenwich. Without objection. Just as a purpose of administratively, you have the, what we have to sign, right?
I just want to say while I'm here, it's an honor to serve under your administration for these many years. Thank you for all the confidence that you put in.
You're very welcome. All the best to you. Okay, the next item is from the Old Greenwich Merchants Association, another annual festival event sponsored by the Old Greenwich Merchants, which is the First Light Festival. This year, it's going to be held on Saturday, December 7th, on Sound Beach Avenue in Old Greenwich, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is an event that the town has annually given permission for. And once again, Rich Fulton from Chili Bear is here and is seeking our approval. Rich, do you want to say anything?
Appreciate it again, and I wanted to echo what Deputy Chief Marino had just said sort of privately to Peter. Appreciate your leadership and service to the town and to Mr. Toner, and good luck to Sandy in the coming election. And just encourage everybody with the Selectmen's approval today to come attend the First Light Festival. It's as popular as ever. It's, I think, our 19th or 20th year, I'm not sure, but the event has blossomed into necessitating the road being closed because we get thousands of people attending a nonprofit volunteer-organized holiday event that is fantastic, horse-drawn carriages with people strolling, and every merchant member participating with either a giveaway, or a magician, or a balloon artist, that sort of thing. It really is one of the great things that goes on in Old Greenwich. So appreciate your approval. Thank you very much.
Peter and John have probably been going there since they were teenagers. But I went for the first time last year, and I have to tell you, it was fabulous.
Yeah, it's funny. It goes quick.
Yeah, but there was just a great vibe. It was really a terrific thing, so.
Yeah, appreciate it. We look forward to it every year, so thank you again.
It was new for me, and it was terrific.
Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Without objection, and thank you, Rich, and your peer merchants for hosting such a great event. Okay, that brings us back to our old business. We've had now, I believe this is the fourth meeting that this has been on our agenda, which is a request for municipal improvement status. For those who perhaps do not know about what that is, it is a request for the Board of Selectmen to consider for referral any alterations, dispositions, changes to not only town properties, but those properties that are under the aegis of the Housing Authority of the town of Greenwich. Just to be clear, the two properties that are being discussed today, which is Armstrong Court and Ori Knoll, are both owned by the Housing Authority. They are not owned by the town of Greenwich, unlike the area we were talking about earlier, which is the Town Hall Annex. And of course, we know about the McKinney Terrace, which this board gave approval to last year unanimously to proceed with construction of, I believe, 50, 51 units of senior disabled housing. So that's the purpose of this. So since we've been considering this, we've been entertaining questions, not only from the board, but from the public. I will just say, for clarification, this board's job is not to determine sightlines, drainage, and things that pertain to site development. That is clearly within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who partners with all the various departments of the town, such as the Public Works Department, engineering. Of course, zoning looks to conformity with their regulations. So we're really looking at it, I think, from a much more global perspective, and does this meet the needs of the town? I think the questions we left off with at the last meeting pertain to, and let's take them individually because the questions were specific. One of them had to do with the environmental concerns. And as was clearly pointed out, those are requirements that you will have to undertake for any type of lender in financing that these projects receive. But we did receive from Commissioner Seabird, who was kind enough to give review with all her other--
May I have a copy of that, please, by the way? I didn't receive a copy of--
So this was a letter dated February 10th, 2017. It actually was to Tony from DEEP, which essentially enumerates issues related to environmental. And what Commissioner Seabird essentially said is that clearly they look to that as their guidance going forward, knowing that you have to go through all these other requirements to get your financing and so forth.
Yes. I'm sorry, I thought you meant there was something new that had come in that I didn't receive.
Well, no, this she provided to us as a result of the request that I made, that I said I would speak to her--
Yes.
--since she's our principal on staff, I would say, I wouldn't say expert, but she's an environmental engineer, so she's the closest thing I have on staff.
Correct.
And then there were some other issues, I think, related on the subject of income levels. And for that, I myself had to go back and review the work that the Housing Task Force did.
Yes.
And again, perhaps I've been here too long. I know many people will say that. Some people will say that. But I did go back to the work that our volunteers did, and I see Ms. Oberlander here, thank you. She served on the Implementation Committee of the POCD, and there were other committees, one of them being the Housing Task Force. And they produced really a blueprint for us as a town to go forward. And I'll be candid, I did not review that up until now to go back and look at what that was telling us. And I only want to speak for myself. I felt like it helped me better understand the direction that you are going in, although I felt I knew it before. But this talked about specifically in the January 30th, 2012 presentation, and this was a committee chaired by Nancy Brown, who was our former Director of Community Development, and had, I'm just going to read the names because many of them are active in the community. Stuart Adalberg, who was head of the United Way at the time, Margrethe Albin, who now sits as Chair of the Planning and Zoning, Kate Brennan, a member of the Commission on Aging, Princess Irv, who was successor to Nancy, Bill Finger, who was on the BET at the time, Ellen Flanagan, who I believe was our Deputy Superintendent of Schools in 2012, or head of-- Diane Fox, our former town planner, Judy Holden, who had been involved in the nonprofit sector, Ken Rogazinski, who I believe sits on our zoning Board of Appeals, Sam Romeo, who is now Chair of the Housing Authority, Mark Schroeder, who was an RTM resident of District 2, Peter Sweetser, who was with Greenwich Hospital, Yale, New Haven, B. Walco, who was retired from the Greenwich Public Schools and acted with the Byram Neighborhood Association, and Mike Warner, who I believe at the time was on the RTM Finance Committee and at that time residing in District 3. So they went through and took all of the various action items that were in the POCD of '09, and they essentially looked at the objectives and then developed recommendations. And they provided what the framework of the recommendations are. And I'm just going to read them. Provide attractive, affordable housing options. Base affordable housing programs on Greenwich housing and income levels. I'll repeat that. Base affordable program on Greenwich housing and income levels. Preserve residential character in neighborhoods. Encourage residential use in commercial areas. Manage affordable housing inventory. Exercise appropriate town oversight. Provide continuing flexible funding. As it relates to action item. Housing Authority should partner with public and private groups and agencies to provide subsidized housing. That was the action. The recommendation of the committee was collaborate with town for subsidized affordable housing. Develop plans, programs, policies. Build relationships with subsidized housing developers. Upgrade and modernize existing housing stock. Strategic plan to renew existing units. So you've done that at Armstrong.
Correct.
And I just bring that up because if we think about what we have going on now, so we have that taking place at Armstrong. We have the new units approved, yet to go before P&amp;Z for McKinney Terrace. Now we're looking at, again, two existing sites that had previously been talked about for consideration, and that's really what's before us in it.
And that's what I maintained was, and I've echoed this even to the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that out of all the places to have this development, it's most efficient and most appropriate to have these existing land assets of the Housing Authority to be utilized in order to make them more efficient, to make them better and better used, and provide this better cross-section of housing opportunities to Greenwich residents.
And I think we've touched on this, and I think, you know, again, I think everybody in this room, irrespective of where you live, what your party is, believes this, I think. Encourage demographic diversity in affordable developments. Priority to seniors, special needs, town workforce. Workforce needs include first responders and essential service providers. Again, this has become a basis for, I think, what you're doing, but it also reminded me to not lose sight of the work that was done and the plan that actually exists. And I believe that was coupled with information that Ms. DeLuca, who I did talk to as well, and seemed, she's conceptually supportive of this, and I think her response to me was that, you know, if this goes forward from this board, she certainly embraces it with the understanding that there's work to do as you refine what you're requesting in defining the income levels. Because that's really an element of these reports, too, that when we talk about quote-unquote "affordable," there's different measurements, whether it be the state measurement. I think our whole focus was, let's-- I think our whole focus was, let's use the Stanford metro as measurement because it's far more realistic to our population.
Yes, yes. I will, I will say this, and Tony Johnson is here who could speak more to it, but these income levels that we speak about are sort of, they don't necessarily match. What I think a lot of times, when we talk about income levels, we talk about them in, within the context of the state framework as it relates to quote-unquote "affordable housing," in the context of sort of this 830, what they call 830G applications, where private developers can come in and propose affordable housing, set aside, what they call "set-aside" projects, and under the, under the condition that they perpet, not perpetually, but for a long time, restrict the income levels of the people that are, restrict the rentals, the rent prices to better, to these income levels, using the standards such as the area and the state median income. Whereas the Housing Authority, for all practical purposes, has used income levels based upon the type of funding that was used for the project. So there's a lot, there's a lot of different elements at play here, and they don't always match. But that was certainly a consideration and a discussion that we had with Katie DeLuca about that. So that's something that we'd certainly firm up and further explore as we go through the process.
One of the other things that was talked about back then, and she alluded to it, too, and this, I think, also holds true for the topic of open space. So, you know, when we, when we think about the issue, and a lot of people say, well, the town should step up and they should essentially tax the property owners to support this. That's one method, which I'm not going to debate here, but I'm just saying that's been talked about in the area of open space, and I think it was also alluded to in what I was reading here as a potential. We look at it, I think, if you look at the history, that the towns repurpose public properties for public housing. And again, we had an inventory of that in the late 70s with, you know, school closure in Byram, the repurposing of this building, which freed up the Town Hall Annex. Parsonage really went through a renew project, which is unique in itself. But that in itself takes on a whole nother challenge. So I, I think our foremothers and forefathers here took what was even controversial back then and said, let's repurpose public, available public property. That's the town's contribution. What happens in the future, to be determined. There's future leaders, and leaders here today that can, can discuss that. But in dealing with what we have before us at the present, which is addressing, upgrading your existing facilities--
Yes.
--I think it's pretty straightforward, that obsolescence occurs, and there's standards today that should be applied versus what the standards were in 1946, or at whatever time those were developed.
Yeah, oh, cer, and certainly. I mean, and that's, and that's forefront of our minds. Again, I mean, we made, the plans for renovating the Armstrong Court units are, you know, was a step, certainly a step in the right direction, the construction of those, those new units. And again, there's, these land assets could just be better utilized. I mean, there's, there, it's, it's, they serve their purpose, and they serve their purpose well, but at the same time, again, they're obsolete, and there's, there's better ways to do it, where you can get much more efficient, much more substantial utilization out of these, out of these, out of these, these properties.
And you responded, I'm not asking Selectmen Lipback, he had raised questions, you responded to him on a follow-up.
Yes.
But another area of this is weighting this, and, you know, how this will have impact. And that's really, I think, what Ms. DeLuca was alluding to as well. So the town, through Planning and Zoning, is looking to qualify us for a moratorium on what is referred to as 830G statute proposals that come in from private developers. And those are deemed to be, not my words, but I know Darian's dealt with this predatory development, where they look to really intensify use in the area, and that creates challenges on infrastructure and so forth. We had an example of that, I believe, in Old Greenwich, and that wound up, I believe, in litigation. So they're trying to perceive in a direction that, that satisfies all goals. One, modernizing, but making sure that the, the units that are modernized help get us toward that. And I think, having read through the response, I, I think we're moving in that direction. I think she said, though, that's, that's something that they, the commission, would work specifically with you toward as you refine your proposal.
I think, I agree with that. Again, I mean, what, what's before you is conceptual, that, you know, that the mix of units and the buildings and how we build them and such may change depending upon, you know, financing and regulations over time and, and the amount of funds available, et cetera. And we had a very good discussion with Katie DeLuca. And yes, I mean, I think that was the outcome, is that we understand that is something that the town feels strongly about, that Planning and Zoning feels strongly about, and that we will naturally discuss as we go through the zoning process with them. They're, they're very knowledgeable and capable, and they have their consultant who deals directly with these types of developments.
And then finally, I just want to acknowledge, Kenro Gazinski, who is on the ZBA, but also was on this Housing Task Force, sent a very thoughtfully articulated letter about some of the press that has been generated regarding this. And in my opinion, he's expressing his frustration that there is, there appears to be impediments despite all the work that was done and the acknowledgement that this, that these people did this work. So I don't know if it appeared yet, but it was sent, it was sent to us. I just want to acknowledge that as it relates to the broader subject. We received, as you know, communications from both the Booth Place Court--
Correct.
--Terrace Neighborhood, which is related to their impacts, which, again, I believe will be, will be addressed if this goes forward by P&amp;Z. And then we've also now received communication from Millbrook as well as to similar concerns. And I don't think that's unlike any type of development anywhere. People naturally want to know, how does this impact us?
Sure.
So that's just, I just want to acknowledge those. If there were others, guys, let me know, but those are the ones that I recall.
Let me start by making a comment that has, well, it has something to do with this particular application, but it's more general.
Okay.
And I think it's been implicit, if not explicit, in what I've said up till now. I am having great difficulty dealing with, and nothing to do with you, per se, with the MI process, because I'm not sure what we are supposed to be doing. We're either blessing something, or we're doing nothing. If we're doing nothing, I don't know why it's here in the first place. That's not your issue, it's the Charter issue. I understand that. But if we're doing something, and we're clearly a potential roadblock, I suppose, and no one wants to be a roadblock, so if we're doing something, what is it that we are doing? For my part, and by the way, I put a number of questions to you. You were very kind to answer them all, and I greatly appreciate it.
Do my best.
I appreciate the Housing Authority. I think some people think I have some animus, they don't. It is my nature, it is my background to ask questions, okay?
Sure.
That's what I do.
As do I, as an attorney.
As you do. And it's always easy to ask than to answer, so I appreciate the answer.
Any dialogue's better than no dialogue.
So, so I've asked a number of questions. They were all designed to, for me, to better understand what we are doing. And by that, what I, what is the end goal here? What is it that we're accomplishing? What is it that we're trying to accomplish? Okay? So I have some specific questions, which are follow-ups to what you did, and then I have a more generic question.
Sure.
So let me ask you the specific questions. You were asked, the questions were posed not by me, but by Katie DeLuca. And one of them, and I just wanted to make sure I understood your answer, the question asked by Katie specifically was about, okay, whether-- Question six of Katie's questions, and her question was, since 1989, how many affordable units have been added to the town's affordable housing stock? You say all, well, you answer it--
I have 185.
185, is that--
185 units, yes, that's--
Since 1989?
Yeah, that's, that's the information.
So in 30 years, we've added 185 units, about six a year. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. It wasn't six a year, it was--
Well, obviously not. I'm just averaging, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and those were all affordable, as I understood your answer.
Yeah. Affordable, but not in the sense of being restricted in the sense of 830G.
So, just so I understand, what do you mean then, or what do I mean when I'm using the word "affordable" in this context?
Well, that's the problem. The affordability, as our attorney here was explaining, varies. It varies from town level, it varies from state level, it varies independently. So when you talk income groups and incomes across that range, it could be a pretty large range of what is affordable from that standpoint. In terms of what the town's trying to do in regulations in terms of 830G, the Housing Authority does not utilize those numbers, as our attorney was saying. What we utilize are funding mechanisms related to the funding that we receive and the entry barriers that are established at that point by the institutions that provide funding, which is usually the state of Connecticut. So therefore, state funding levels are different than public housing funding levels, but it's all affordable.
So there, it ends up being a different, a different, a different metric, I would say, you know, when you look at these things. From 830G, when you look at it in the context of an 830G application--
This was just distributed, and it relates to what the zoning department handles in terms of available units. So I printed that out--
But that's state median income.
But that's, but that's the state median--
Which is different than the town's median income, which is different than the federal government's.
So, so that's-- And which do you use, Tony?
We use them all.
A mix? I mean, how do you--
No, it depends on who you get the funding from.
It depends. So if we get, if we get a loan for, you know, X million dollars or whatever, and, and the loan program says you can only charge, you know, it's based upon, as long as you run out units at this price level, at this rent level, that's it. So that's what we go for. We're not tied, we don't have a natural power structure or authority structure where the Greenwich Housing Authority gets something from the state, direction from the state through this 830G standard in order to do its, to do its thing.
But I find it's, what Tony said a moment ago, it's based upon where you get your funding.
Correct.
And since you get none of your funding from the town, none of the town data is used, per se. You're using something else.
Yeah.
Correct.
But we will be willing to accept 100% of the funding, provide as much affordable housing as you want to provide.
No, I got that, but to date, it's zero.
We'll turn it all into affordable housing. Just write a check, we'll be happy to do it.
To date, it's zero, so you pay no attention to the town's--
We pay much attention to the town, that's why we're here. That's why I've paid my attorney $10,000 in a process already where I've received nothing trying to do affordable housing.
We do better if you just let me finish the sentence.
All right.
And you can criticize, but let me finish.
That wasn't criticism, it was just a point.
What I was trying to say is, to the extent you use levels determined on who's giving you the funding, basically you're looking at the state, which provides some of the funding, correct?
Correct.
And federal government, I think you said, which provides some of the funding for some of the projects, or no?
Not new developments. What they provide is tax credits, which is a different program.
Okay. So how do you take into account, or don't you at all, local income levels?
Well, that's the town. The town has local income levels. What the, what the federal government, what the state utilizes are two different things. We have the Fairfield, Norwalk, income ranges, which is established through HUD. Actually, it's established from the federal government, but it's utilized for this particular area. And that's basically, within that range, there are ranges. So let's say the range is from, you know, zero to $140,000, which is 80% of area median income for what you can call affordable housing. When we do new developments, which is the new structure of doing new housing, is for the primary financing source of tax credits, with a private investor who buys the credits from you, which creates the equity that goes into the deal, and then you get some private loans to make up the differential in terms of the development cost. Even within that range, I could house people at low-income housing, which is 10% to 30% of their, of the area median income, 40%, 50%, 60%. What the state does is, because this is competitive funding, the more people you can serve at the furthest end of the range, at the bottom of the range gets you more points in order to get the funding for the developments that you're going to do. So if I can provide 50% of the units at the lowest income level, I'm going to get the maximum points in the process of applying for these grants, which is what I would want to do. And then the only people I can house in those units would be people with a net income.
And now just to, I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm sorry. So one of the questions I asked you, and this will get to the, and sort of the, almost the end of where I am. I asked you, how many seniors can afford the proposed market rent? In other words, what percentage of the seniors' market will you be serving, and what percentage of our senior population does that represent? And I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you answered that.
Well, I can't answer that question. I mean, we--
I'm sorry, you can or cannot, you said?
I cannot. We have not studied the market. We, we did a market study, and, and again, I think there's an understanding that someone believes the Housing Authority has done this master plan, and we haven't presented it to you, which is not true. What we're doing is we're serving a particular market because we understand what the market is in relationship, because we are the largest landlord in the Town of Greenwich. We know what the market is. We also know that we've been asked to serve a particular market, a market that we don't serve today, the seniors, that we want to serve. Do we know as a fact that there's a, a market out there for what we're going to do? No, it's not empirical. We haven't done that yet. What we're doing is conceptual, and that's why we're trying to get started so we can actually figure out what we can do.
You see, and that's my problem. I mean, it's, it's where I started. You come in, you got a concept. I have lots of concepts. I have no facts.
Yeah.
You have no facts, and yet you're asking us to approve this, and I don't get it. I mean, look, this process has long, been here long before me, and will be here long after me, and maybe it makes sense. I don't get it. To me, if we are approving something, we ought to have the facts. I ought to know what percentage of the senior market you're serving, what percentage needs this, how are you going to deal with the need? Just to say I'm going to serve seniors, I'm a senior, you're serving me?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
And I can tell you--
Serving Dieter, he's almost a senior.
Well, then, Dieter possibly because he works for the town. You, no.
Okay, okay.
But the fact is, is that we do know the market, and I understand where you're going with this. But I, I think you need to understand that we've spent thousands of dollars just to get to this process in the past, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to be told no. So your question is very interesting. How many units have we, the Housing Authority, done? The town has stocked over 300 units that the Housing Authority could have developed through this process. So I think that's the real question. How many have you approved that you allowed the Housing Authority to do?
I have approved every one that's come before me.
I'm talking about in general, not just you. This is not pointing at you.
No.
You're representing the town. I'm representing the Housing Authority, not Sandy and Tony.
I'm just saying--
We can have a drink afterward.
As I said, I just wanted it clear. I voted for everyone you presented--
No, it's not about you. I'm just saying in general, that, that's the real question.
Okay, I don't know the answer.
Right? And, and if we were allowed to have done these things in the past, you wouldn't have an 830G problem today. That's my opinion.
Well, and you may well be right, and that's unfortunate.
But, but the process can't be the process where the Housing Authority has to find money to come and fight a battle that we shouldn't have to fight, when no other developers fight.
No, I, I hear you, but the flip side of that is the board shouldn't be asked to make decisions without facts. And, you know, somewhere in this process, there's going to be a given test.
I think that's, I think, me, as a standpoint, if I were to go back and deconstruct what you're talking about, we're not the people. What should happen is that, that should be a challenge to the town in terms of MI process. That's where I would take it. Not, not to the applicant who's just going through the process and who has done this now for years, and the process has been the process, and now we're going to define the process in some other manner. That becomes a problem. It's a problematic, because no one understands what the rules are there.
Yeah, I, I, and I do appreciate the concern, I really do. I have a different, obviously, problem in that I'm sitting here for the first time, not, not literally, but figuratively, and I say, I need facts, always need facts, to support something. I understand your point, don't, please, do not get me wrong. I grasp it, and it is about the process. I started talking about the process. I don't understand how we vote to approve things without knowing what we're doing, without the basic facts. I understand your point that it costs money to get those facts, and you're reluctant to spend that money. I'm reluctant to vote for something when I don't have facts.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, this is what it's about. We're the Housing Authority, we provide affordable housing. Either for it or against it, and it gets worked out in the end, in terms of the process.
Tony, may I just interject something? Because I mean, in terms of, you know, trying to give quote-unquote "back to it," if you take, if you take the definition of what's affordable housing, it says here, it's defined as housing where tenants receive no governmental financial support whatsoever to pay their rent or mortgage, but a developer-owner has voluntary agreed to limit rents or sales prices to an amount-- prices to an amount which is widely affordable based on the Greenwich-Stanford-Norwalk area median income. In contrast to subsidized housing, which is defined as housing where government financial support or subsidy is offered either to unit owners or tenants to reduce housing costs to low-income tenants. Subsidy is defined as that portion of rent that is paid by a third party other than the actual tenant. So, trying to get our clarity in terminology is important for understanding how you would classify the proposed units, conceptual otherwise, that you're trying to do. Are they affordable, or are they subsidized, or are they both?
Well, if we can get it subsidized, as I said, it's a competitive process, and that can take forever, or we can do private financings where we would not interject funding. Again, let me go back to the starting point. If we can get 100% financing from a source related to governmental entity, we will make 100% of the units affordable. That's what the Housing Authority does, that's what we wanted. But that's not realistic. The model for affordable housing is exactly what I said, it's a mixed-income, mixed-community that is subsidized through the use of market rate and a combination of market rate and affordable units being put together. That's the process, that's the financing process. That's it. Other than that, there are no further quarry knows or will repacts that are going to be funded by any governmental agency anywhere in the country. That's not going to happen. So, you mix those incomes because that's the financial source, it's from tax credits and equity, with no direct loans from the federal government or anyone else. So, you actually have to figure it out. It's a balancing act. How can you balance the affordable units that you're trying to provide, as many as possible? That's the end of the day. As many as you can provide as possible, through the mechanisms of balancing your property and your portfolio to make it work.
Right. And I understand that, and I think that's become clearer as you've been before us, that this is something that you have to take the initiative on, because at the present time, and I speak for the present, then no one else will, based upon where the federal government is and so forth. So, there was one other question.
Actually, let me just interrupt you there. I think just some, one thing needs to be clarified, and we have to keep in mind, and I think we always, I think we're overusing the term affordable here. I think a lot of the discussion revolves around what is considered affordable for 830G purposes, to go toward the moratorium against what others, what some perceive as this predatory development. That is a separate animal. Those considerations and that income level and those quote-unquote "affordable" units, what counts toward that total is much different than what we're talking about now. What the Housing Authority has done before that, before 830G came into place, was being practically affordable, was being real-world affordable, as opposed to a contrived calculation in the context of 830G. I think that's a lot of the confusion here, when people say affordable, affordable, affordable. Is it going toward the affordability count that will go ultimately toward this moratorium, or is it practically affordable? What the Housing Authority, I would say, deals with is practical affordability. So, there's a lot of confusion there.
And just to be clear, and so I can clarify that point and make it crystal clear, every unit of affordable housing that we do going forward, because we don't have state funding, if we took state funding, it's going to be automatically affordable. If we took federal government money, it would be automatically affordable. But any unit that we've developed, with or without governmental entity assistance, we're going to de-restrict, we're willing to de-restrict them. We've done it. You asked us about a property, we had a for-sale unit. We provided the money for the for-sale units to affordable folks. We de-restricted it to the owners, because we didn't want the owners to sell those properties out from underneath us and from the affordable standpoint. So, yes, we are willing to de-restrict all the units that we deem affordable in this process, which will get to your point.
And I'll also add, too, that a lot of these... Ms. Silica did confirm that in the email to you, because she did speak to the state regarding the housing equivalency points, and she says that very clearly, that we're interested in pursuing this with you, the Housing Authority, in the fact that the renters are making no more than the area median income, not the state income they use now, and that if you agree to de-restrict enough units, we can get to the moratorium, and that would be great to offset the opposition to the 10%.
And we're willing to do that, that's not a problem. That's what we would do anyway. Because even if we did not, if we got federal government financing, they're automatically de-restricted, because they come with the covenant in the contracts that they're restricted. If we actually finance them ourselves, we will voluntarily de-restrict those units that are affordable.
Did you have anything, because you're silent, you had...
No, I think that what the Housing Authority is trying to do, or is proposing to do, is to move forward with providing additional housing in the town of Greenwich for people that need housing in conformity with the POCD, and...
My, just a last comment. My focus, not my concern, but my focus is a little different in the following sense. I understand about the affordable, I also understand that at least at Armstrong Court, we're talking about five units. Let's be real, that's all we're talking about. I understand the point that in order to do five units, you have to have market rates on others. What I don't understand, and what I tried to drive at, and I do understand your answer, is you justify, and I use that word not pejoratively, the whole thing on the fact that you're providing much-needed senior housing, which everyone agrees, particularly I, is needed. But when I ask you for facts about the seniors you're providing it for, what that market really is, what portion of it you're serving, how long the waiting list is for that, who they are, that kind of stuff, you don't have that data, or any of it. You make the point that, well, to do that is spending a lot of money, and I don't want to do that, this project isn't going forward, which I also understand. But my problem is, without those facts, you're trying to, you're telling me that you're addressing a problem without giving me any facts that you really have your arms around the problem. So, that's my problem.
Yeah. Just one point of clarification. We actually did give you our waiting list information.
Yes, you did.
You have that.
Yeah, it's a big, long waiting list.
I did give you a market, yeah, it is. And turnover is very slow.
That's what it says.
Very, very slow. So, then, for senior housing, usually the only way you get into our senior housing today is through the death of an individual, which we don't want to talk about, or through someone needing a higher level of care, which is, we usually feed people into Parsons Cottage. That's why that works for us. I tried to explain this once before, that the Housing Authority is a really organic operation. We take people from family housing to assisted living. You keep putting back at the Armstrong Court senior development that we're trying to do. That Armstrong Court senior development is targeted to an individual group, based on the Commission on Aging, asks us to look at this group of families and senior citizens in Greenwich who are selling out homes, who do not necessarily qualify for quote-unquote "public-state affordable housing," because their income limits or their assets may be higher than we can allow them to be housed at. That's why we're trying to fill that next gap. Do I know the market is there? I do not know it, but I'm going to know it once I'm approved and I can actually spend $15,000 on a market step. And if it isn't done, if the market's not there, we're not going to risk it and build something that we can't build.
The difference between us is, I'd like to know...
I got you.
Who you're serving, are you really serving anybody, are you really solving the problem? You're telling me, I can't tell you that until I get to the next stage, and I'm telling you, I have problems.
Well, I think we've provided tons of information, and it comes down to...
You have provided information, there's no question of that.
Well, yeah.
I'm not suggesting you're hiding anything.
Again, I'd like to just, again, move to the point that we had a very thorough and exhaustive process as a town in 2009. It gave way to a number of different reports, and I've heard over the last several months how, you know, people don't want to study things, or things sit on shelves. This was a case where they didn't. I mean, if you think about the downtown planning committee under Heidi Breaksmith, what she produced, volunteer, no paid consultants, and it's a roadmap. We look at what this group produced, and the housing task force under Nancy Brown, and subsequently under Mary Ellen Levine, and it's also, I'm going to say, a roadmap, it's direction. Speaking for myself, I feel very comfortable with what they did, and what exists as a result of a very open and deliberate, transparent process, that the town has quote-unquote "a plan." Now, you're in the position to execute it for us. I am agreeing with the concept, and it really speaks to a very valid question that Sandy raised, and he brings a new perspective to this. This issue of MI has been debated long before we got here, and it will probably be debated long after, unless there's some modifications to what that is. But if you read Section 99, and essentially is, it doesn't even say it comes to us, if I recall, it doesn't, that's just how the town, through the legal department, has said the executive board should refer. So, does it have merit? So, I use the criteria, well, does it have merit? Is it fall within the definition? And we've given scrutiny to other MIs, the most notable one was New Lebanon School. Now, in the end, the board agreed that we needed a new school, we were focused on, well, should it be here, there, woods, and they went through the arduous process. I want to say that only because I don't want you to feel you're the only ones who've been sort of treated rigorously. They were treated as well.
I don't feel that way, Peter. I just feel that we don't have enough money to continue to have...
No, I understand that, and that's, I think, the argument, and I do think that's perhaps an issue for, you know, whether it's through the selectmen, the planning and zoning, I only can go on what I know today, which is what was done, and then also now talking to Katie to ask her, well, how do you look at this? And I think she looks at it affirmatively in that it's a progression, in that the details, much of which, and again, she said this to me, will be worked out by them. Either do we support the concept of what's being requested? So, in my vote, I would move it forward, knowing that we have appointed very qualified people to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they will be reviewing this over probably months, if not a year, as you go out, and I imagine to go out into the market, you have to have some assertion that the concept is viable.
Correct.
That's what was my question I alluded to.
Absolutely.
I always saw this as basically you're opening the door for us. You're opening the door for the Housing Authority to go on to the next step, you know, to give us that comfort that, okay, that the town, its executive board supports it, so that we can go seek the financing, hire consultants, and go forward with the process, which is not an easy process to go through.
Which you're not going to do if you don't get, I mean, you're not going to do anything if you don't get the approval, which, I mean, it's a business decision.
It's a nonprofit business, I mean, it's...
We've learned in the past, right? I mean, in the past, we came with completed plans to this board, having spent $600,000, and it was turned down. So, we will never do that again.
Yeah, there's a big difference between $600,000 and the $15,000 that you alluded to for what I was asking, but okay.
But I'm just saying, what we've done in the past, we've had completed plans, which is what we thought was needed. And so, they can always, we can always find a point of contention in a concept, so...
We have, by the way, we have candidates who are waiting, if they're in the audience, for interviews, pardon us, when was 10:30 you said? I always, for action purposes, would like to move the first one, which is Greenwich Housing Authority request for MI for constructing a new building with approximately 50 elderly, 55 and older units, consisting of market-rate units with up to 10% units being affordable in a single building, to be located to the rear of the property in Booth. And that's, I'm putting forward what you requested. Yes, Ms. Rayman?
I believe there are several of the people like you, that you're...
I'm going to beg to differ with you about process. There's been numerous articles on the Greenwich Press and in the Greenwich Times. I've looked out at the audience, I see a couple new faces, but in terms of neighborhoods, Booth has been clearly represented at all of them. They're acutely aware, so I don't... But it's an inference, it's an inference. And in Millbrook, Mr. Lagano reached out to us, he was at the last meeting, and was clearly aware of the subject matter, as was Mr. Rittman, who is here, who actually took initiative, and I applaud him, to go meet with the Housing Authority to better understand it. I'm happy to answer a question, but it is not a public hearing, we've given ample opportunity to people, and again, this is not the end, it's the beginning of what's going to be a very long and arduous process. So, unless someone wants to stand up and say they don't agree with the concept that we should modernize affordable housing, I'd love to hear that. But that's really, in a nutshell, what they're doing, because they're taking, in the case of quarry, clearly, something that goes back to the 1940s, and bringing it into compliance, and also with Armstrong adding what everyone's been chiming about in this report, we need more senior housing. So, I'm happy to entertain brief comments, but I'm not going to entertain an attack on the Housing Authority. Frankly, Greenwich is better than that, and I have to defend them in the sense that I think their purpose is noble. I do know that the people who reside there depend upon them, and we're happy to entertain questions on a specific part of this, but it's the concept that we're approving. I'm not going to answer questions about drainage, because that's not my job. That's what Commissioner Seibert will do. Traffic, that's what she will do, and we don't even have that level of detail, nor would we, just like we didn't have it with the schools. So, if you have a particular question, I'm happy to entertain.
I have a two-page submission, which I would like to actually articulate, but if you're not going to let me, I would like to at least submit it.
Please submit it, and we'll put it in the record.
And something raised just this morning, which is the rent. I support the Housing Authority, and we have to have a Housing Authority here. It's an essential for the poor people of this community, but it is supposed to be for the poor people of the community. That is my concern. And so, I would like you to be aware, specifically of Section, the Connecticut law covers rents for Housing Authority properties. This is not a, you know, do anything that works, it is not pragmatic, it is statutory. So, 839, dash 839 of the Connecticut General Statutes, at K, says, "Moderate rental means a rental which, as determined by an authority with the concurrence of the commissioner of housing," that is, the state commissioner of housing, "is below the level at which private enterprise is currently building a needed volume of safe and sanitary dwellings for rental in the locality involved." And a moderate rental housing project means a housing project receiving state aid in the form of loans or grants for families unable to pay more than moderate rent. And at R of 39, excuse me, of 839 of the Connecticut General Statutes, excuse me, sorry, wrong place. Sorry, I've lost my, in my place. The rental is governed by state law, the authority is governed by state law, and it cannot operate outside that sphere. And I think that's extremely important. The other aspect is the fact that we have 3,100 people in Greenwich living in poverty. That's the United Way data, it's not mine. There are 1,328 public school children receiving free or reduced-priced meals. There are 7,500 residents in this town who are defined as ALIS, which means asset limited, income constrained, and employed. It is the working poor. It is these people of low and moderate income that this agency must serve. And we have, right now, per their memo, there are, sorry, one second, there are 421 of these low and moderate income families on the Housing Authority... these low and moderate income families on the Housing Authority waiting list. There are 100 seniors on that waiting list. These people have to be addressed. We must assist these people before we assist others who have more. And the Housing Authority, when I was on Planning and Zoning, came before us with a property on Strickland Avenue, which they purchased, and I was told on the record that they would not deed restrict it. One of the apartments on that Strickland Avenue property is now on the market on their website for $2,500 a month and utilities. The property, sorry, the one-bedroom apartments they are proposing are $3,300 a month for a one-bedroom apartment. That is not a viable arrangement for most of the people in the senior community in this town. Thank you. I very much appreciate your allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Again, I think they've never said that they haven't had market rate units. In fact, they champion the fact, because it's getting back to the whole point, who's going to pay for those that are subsidized? So, it's a blend. Actually, I found a brochure in our office dating back to, I think, the 90s, where you articulated everything that you were asked to provide at the last meeting, number of units, year that it was established, the income guidelines that governed it and so forth. It's a pale blue one. It's very much like this. Anyhow, so, thank you. Yes.
Sorry. I'll be.
You know, I know, and I welcome you. You had not come to the pre-.
I have not. Hi, I'd like to identify myself, Alana Hines. I'm also a resident of Overlook Drive in Millbrook. I want to say that most of what I say is not representative, I'm not trying to speak for my neighbors. I was born on Overlook Drive. I've lived there basically my whole life. I feel very strongly that Quarry Knoll was intended to be a facility for seniors, and specifically low-income seniors. And to sort of echo what Sandy was saying, what concerns me is that we should be able to make a statement, I think, that we are trying to serve a specific population, and so, you know, the fact that we don't have the facts is very concerning to me. I 100% agree. I've driven through Quarry Knoll. I understand that the units are old. They are not up to current standards. I wouldn't want my grandmother living there. You know, I appreciate that it needs to be upgraded. I really think that we should be able to make a statement that we are trying to serve a specific population before we go out, and, you know, we should be able to say how many units are going to meet the standards for different people. I also believe that it's a little bit short-sighted to say that moving seniors from the middle of town to Byram is a viable solution for folks who probably rely on walking to the senior center, the grocery store, and other areas. And, you know, I can attest, it's traumatic for everyone to move. I would have to think it would be particularly traumatic for older people who've gotten accustomed to their community to be moved far across town to an unfamiliar neighborhood where they may be away from the services that the town so generously provides to them. So, I think that Quarry Knoll is an excellent location for senior housing, based on its location near a lot of town amenities, and so I would really like people to take that into account. And, you know, I bought on Overlook Drive again, because I love the community. I'm not saying, this is not a, not in my backyard. We're all aware that it was there when we moved in, and believe that we felt comfortable that, you know, that was really providing a strong need. In full disclosure, my mother's also on the Commission on Aging in town, so I have, you know, another reason to care about senior citizens. It's a sort of passion point for my family. So, that's all I wanted to say. I just, I hope to, I hope that we can really focus on a very needy population who I think are typically forgotten in a lot of processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
It would be wonderful for anyone who is very interested to come by and look at our plans. We're bringing back at least 50 units of senior housing back to Quarry Knoll. Where it came from that we weren't doing that, I don't know. People make up what they want to make up when they don't have the facts. We want to talk about facts? This is a fact. There's another fact, that we've had individuals who went up to the Department of Housing, spoke with Mike Santoro, who's Director of Housing at the State of Connecticut, to find out, you know, if the Housing Authority was in its rights in terms of development plans that we're actually putting together. And they were told that the Housing Authority was well within its rights to do what we're doing, and that they encourage mixed-financed units, because that's the only way it can get paid for. People understand that. Some people want to make it a political argument, for whatever reason. I don't know. I'm not in politics. I don't want to be a politician. I have no interest in it. What I want to do is provide housing for the population that we serve. That's what we're doing. We're not getting rid of the seniors out of the middle of Quarry Knoll. We want them there. We want them back. But you've got to move people somewhere to develop the site. And we can't develop the site until we move people somewhere else. And that's why we're developing a building. Actually, in some other town, you know what they do? Where I come from in Chicago, they hand them a bunch of vouchers and say, go find somewhere else to live. That's not what we're doing. We're actually moving the people, building the building, saying, here you go. And if you want to come back to the new senior building at Quarry Knoll, you can. You have first right to refuse them. That's the plan. That's the concept. That's all I wanted to say.
Yes, sir. Can you come forward, so we? Please.
Hi, my name is Tom Hughes. I've lived on Overlook Drive for 33 years. There was a proposal not dissimilar to this one years ago that was rejected. In 30 seconds, can you articulate why it was rejected?
I was not here when that took place, so no, I cannot.
Okay. Let me do it, then. It was rejected because the dramatic impact on the Millbrook residents was so significant that it was turned down. In the daisy chain of things that are going to take place as a result of Quarry Knoll going up by 400%, the developer makes money. We do a good thing by creating housing for those who need it. But in the daisy chain of economics, the losers are the people in Millbrook. You cannot tell me that my house and all the other houses that are on Overlook Drive are not dramatically affected by this project, dramatically. So, in the quid pro quo, we should consider what a quid pro quo is for the people in Millbrook. Change the mill rate. We're donating the most in this project. You took the average cost of a house in Millbrook on Overlook Drive, and you subtract 10% from that, 20% from that because of this project. We're the biggest contributors. So maybe you change the mill rate, so our taxes go down. Or the taxes in Millbrook or Overlook Drive are held at a certain rate, so they can't change. These things need to be considered. But I'm saying there's a precedent that has been set years ago, 15, 20 years ago. There was a similar project proposed. I would suggest, look at those minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to say that, you know, I've spoken with the Millbrook Association, this project earlier on, years ago, 10 years ago. We worked with the Millbrook Association. They actually, back then, endorsed the plan. And so, I don't get what the gentleman is saying from the standpoint that we are affecting his mill rate, or would affect his mill rate. I think what I heard, if I'm right, is that at the expense of the Housing Authority, he should benefit, because we have 50 units on seven acres. That's what I heard. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm not right. Well, you can when you get a chance. I didn't interrupt you. So, we have to utilize the assets that we have.
You mentioned earlier, and I think this is important, for their property owner, just like we're all property owners, and you said that you have an as-of-right use. So, that's not something this board is going to change in terms of impacts to the value of your home, which is really what I think you were speaking to. That directly goes to the role that the assessor plays in assigning value to your neighborhood. She comes up with the various neighborhoods and valuation methodologies, and if you don't like that, the Board of Assessment Appeals is going to be elected next, what, two weeks? And they're going to listen to hundreds, if not thousands, of people, appeal to them and say, our home should be reduced because X, Y, and Z. You live near the railroad, or, you know, you've got drainage issues. I mean, I've heard them all over the last several years. But I don't think we could sit here and say we should just turn it down because it was rejected, whatever. Maybe. They could be, or they, we also could have learned more. I'm dealing with the facts I got before me, sir, and I'm going to make a judgment based upon a deliberative process that resulted in a clear guidance to the fiduciaries of the town that has to balance everybody's needs, yours, theirs. But it's one thing for us to say, it didn't work, whatever, years ago. We're just going to say, no, no. Then we don't address a problem that I think everybody's here, in some way, acknowledging exists, which is we've got old. I would even go so far as to say, non-compliant with Quarry Knoll, because I've been in them from a fire point of view. We have to make progress, and this is not the final determination. This is saying, yes, there's merit to what they're trying to do. Planning and zoning's got to work through all this, as it relates to your issues, as it relates to the issues down on Booth. It's their job to do that. That's what we appoint. It's our job to say, is this a valid request, based upon what's been submitted? And I happen to think it is, again. Yes.
Hi, I'm Allison Walsh, and I'm from Chico Hominy, from District 3. And I have a quick comment. I'll try to keep my comment really quick about the concept of the Armstrong Court development as a concept. And as a concept, I think that, you know, for many reasons that other people have discussed, including erosion and flood control, and the fact that it's some of the only green space in this overdeveloped, overpaved neighborhood, it's a bad concept to build anything new in that green space behind Armstrong Court off Booth Place. Because it's the backyard of the people who live there, and it's got a basketball court, and it's got a playground, and it's used for recreation by the people who are the current residents of the Housing Authority at Armstrong Court. And what the Housing Authority has done is build new buildings in the front yard, and taken the front yard for perfectly great purposes, which I understand are to move them into, from the dilapidated buildings, into the new buildings, so that the dilapidated buildings can be renovated. Hardly agree with that, but having taken their front yard, you really want to take their backyard as a concept, and because you have a piece of property that was acquired with certain constraints on what kind of income levels you could put on it, presumably with state and federal funding, or maybe just state funding, those, presumably those constraints continue to apply to that site and to what the Housing Authority can do to that site. And I'm not a housing lawyer. I am very new to looking at these statutes, but I do understand that the Housing Authority was created pursuant to state statute, you know, under the Greenwich Charter pursuant to state statute, which does perhaps, perhaps encourage or permit them to do mixed-financing housing, basically borrowing from the private sector as well as from the public sector. But I don't believe, I mean, I don't really know, and it's really a question, because you said you were going to entertain questions. I have a question as to whether this is ultra-virus for this authority at all, to be doing market-rate housing. It's one thing to say you can take private financing. It's another thing to say you can do it for people who aren't low, moderate, or very low income. And I don't know the answer to that question. It's a legal question.
Well, here's an example for you. We'll open up the blinds, and we'll look out, and we'll see Greenwich Close. Greenwich Close was a property acquired by the Housing Authority using conventional financing, which they now own and have owned for, what, 20 years? And they do have set aside of units that go toward employees of the town. So, those are the subsides. So, in terms of questioning, what I hear you saying is you're questioning or raising the concern about the validity of, what they're doing, is it right? I can only go on their history, in my knowledge, that they have never been cited for noncompliance with what their charge is. And I mean, that's the most direct example that I can find, knowing that that was an acquisition they did with the intent to help generate revenue to support those that they subsidize.
Right. And I mean, my impression is that they are authorized to create housing solely for low or moderate income families, and not for perhaps seniors in Greenwich who could afford to rent in the region, or even in Greenwich. But in concept, I just, I do want to put on the record that I think that the site at Armstrong Court, just because you have a little bit of green space there, doesn't mean that it serves the purposes of the Housing Authority to develop on it, when it really is a backyard. It really is the backyard of the people who live there. And it's, as you know, some of the only green space in a really, really overdeveloped and overpaved part of this town. So, thank you.
Great. Lucy, or Jill and Lucy.
I just have a quick question. I've been looking for the backup material and the answers that were provided to the questions that were asked online. I can't seem to find them, so maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot. Maybe you could tell me where to look for all of the materials on this project, so that we can better understand what the actual proposal and how the answers are. I've also, I also was looking on the Housing Authority property site to find it, and I noticed that their audits, which I thought would give us a little bit of background on their structure, and their properties are also not updated. So, maybe you could provide that information as well from the Housing Authority structurally, so we can better understand as a public how they're structuring each of their properties. I think the last report was 2014 that's posted, so it would be great to have that material updated for the rest of us to better understand the structure. And if you could tell me where.
Can I email that to you?
So, it's not publicly posted right now, online? Is it someplace?
Those are not.
Okay.
Hi, I have a statement I'll pass out to you guys, but my big question is. May I have your name, please? Lucy Von Brockle. I live in Byram. I haven't heard a thing about outreach to the tenants in these, on these properties. I haven't heard anything from those tenants. I don't see anything in the minutes that the tenants were part of this process, or that they've seen any of this information. I find that terribly concerning, because your role as the Board of Selectmen and through the municipal improvement project process is to care for the residents, not the authority. And I think it's very important that you refocus back on the communities, the residents, and I understand the authority has concerns about how much money they're spending and all of that, but our focus, you know, and government focus is on your constituents, not these other governing bodies.
Just so you know, Ms. Von Brockle, the Housing Authority actually has tenant commissioners that come from the population, so they attend the board meetings.
I know.
Well, there's elections, and elections select people to be fiduciaries, to represent their interests. I just want to also point out, because you could color the conversation by not accentuating all of the facts, which are, the board actually increased. Did you know that? That the Housing Authority increased its representation?
To seven board members.
To seven. They've been, they've been.
All right. Let's talk about the residents. The reason the residents are now here, it's because they support the plan. So, when people speak for our residents, I find it very interesting that they speak for our residents. And so, you are one resident, and you can get up and.
You don't live in public housing, Mr. Lowersdorf, so please. You live in private housing. Ms., these ladies I recognize from Quarry Knoll.
So, we've discussed these plans for years, especially Quarry Knoll, and especially over at Armstrong Court. They are over the moon because of what we're doing at Quarry Knoll and Armstrong Court. The new housing, the idea of the renovations, and I just find it very interesting when people want to throw other folks out, that they haven't spoken to themselves, or haven't asked me if we've spoke to them, or had conversations with our residents, because we do. And we're not hiding anything. Why people want to make this a political issue, and they haven't come forward until today to have this conversation is very interesting, because it's an election. I know it's silly season, but we need to focus in on what we need to do at the Housing Authority. We're trying to do our best. We put forward plans. We spend a lot of money. We continue to spend money. And we want to do this for the town. This is not for the Housing Authority. We don't make money doing this. We're doing it for the residents. Now, how we go about doing it, we've sought solicitation from organizations within town. This senior building is there because we're working with the Commission on Aging for this building, not because the Housing Authority decided that's what they wanted to do. And again, one more time, we're willing to provide 100% public housing if somebody funds it. 100%. we're willing to provide 100% public housing if somebody funds it. 100%. Write a check. We'll do it. I have no problem.
Just so you know, I take great exception to the suggestion that the questions being raised, the arguments being advanced, the data being requested is about elections or, quote, "a silly season." I take great exception. You have no basis for that. It is in fact untrue. You may disagree. You are free to disagree. Do not, do not attribute motives to people.
Ms. Fortunato, and then Mr. Logano, and then anybody else, because we have people waiting now over an hour.
Good afternoon. I just, I'm going to just send the minutes over the last year and the P&amp;Z file from Armstrong Court, where there are currently two nonconforming buildings that are there. The three, the four-story building is nonconforming in an arsenic zone, as is the five-story building that's being proposed at Quarry. The POCD is not about concentration of affordable housing or senior housing. It's about scattered development. So I also wanted to bring to your attention that the day after we left the meeting, new no trespassing signs went up at the bottom of my street, which I guess are about me. But I wanted to let you know that one of the neighbors did test their property, and it did come back positive for lead and arsenic above the limits.
And that, you know what, and I'm going to tell you about that, because the hysteria that's been created in this town about contaminants, that may very well be true. It probably is true. But we also don't control what people do on their private property. And as I said, I drove through the neighborhood.
They're 22 feet away, Mr. Tessie. They are the abutting property owner to the Housing Authority. I also had a discussion with Mr. McRae during appointments on Monday at the Land Use Committee, and I asked him about how many soil samples would be required on a 15 to 20 acre piece of property, and his answer was a minimum of 20. They've only done 10, six which were, which were composite. We know it's there. I've provided you the facts. I mean, I can have the rest of the neighborhood.
But it does not, does not validate your statements, which give perception through media. I only want to say that somehow that Armstrong Court was not compliant with their requests, because they were. I have the letter from Ms. Seabert that she got from DEEP, and that what took place on your property, anyone surrounding, relates to what's on theirs, because we don't know what you're doing on your property.
It's fly ash, Mr. Tessie. Come on. Come on. Do you want me to go around on a soil testing expedition?
Well, then those people now, once, once you've done that, you've now put a, put a red flag on your property.
Well, not really, because we know where it's coming from. We know who the polluter is.
You don't.
We, we do. 30 year, 38 years, an incinerator blew. You talked about soot from your grandparents. Everybody in the neighborhood had soot. Every surrounding property has the fly ash and the arsenic. 38 years, we had an incinerator. We built a middle school in the 60s next to the dump. I proved the point, lead, arsenic, chloridate PCBs. That is an abutter. We abut these properties. It's ground zero.
Yeah, there's a big distinction between Western Middle School, which they use the materials from there, it appears, versus private property that appears, looking at the topography, had no fill.
I'm sorry?
If you look at the two examples you're giving, you're giving private property, which again.
Western is public property.
No, I'm saying.
I'm saying this is what's in, what's come up in our yards because of the incinerator for all these years. That got jammed down our throat, because we predated the incinerator. We didn't want it. There was supposed to be a golf course that went there. We didn't get the golf course. We got the incinerator. Two people, the AdSits and the Tessies, sold their property and sold our health down the river. That's reality.
Well, I, I take unbridge on that. I know it makes good headlines, but what, what my ancestors 100-plus years ago did in today, all it does is make headline, but the, I've studied, I've studied Josephine Everest, so I'm a, I'm a student of, the fact is, an incinerator was put there. The town shut it down. I actually, since you've, you like to throw things. I actually, I actually was instrumental in getting the smoke stacks taken down in 1997 during.
Yeah, anyway, you're not going to be satisfied, no matter what I say or do. I wish all the best, but that should not impede the Housing Authority from proceeding with constructive plans based upon citizen-driven.
You're destroying our neighborhood for five units. Five units are affordable. So it also raises the question, if they're low income and they're putting in these higher value rental incomes for seniors, and they're nonprofit, that makes them for profit. Do they still get the benefit from the low taxes if they're benefiting from the gas bill?
I'm not going to respond to that, but what I will respond to is that previously, Mr. Tessie, as you know, this building was originally meant to be a low-income senior project, and she was against that. Previous to that, we were doing family housing, and she was against that, because we were going to overcrowd the kids, overcrowd the schools with the wrong kind of kids. And that was her comment, because, you know, we had children there. But so, my point being is that it was a low-income senior building previously. We pulled it out. We didn't do it. We bring it back. Now it's a mixture of lower-income folks and a different market that we're trying to serve, and it's still not acceptable. It will never be acceptable.
Thank you. We're not, we're not going to go back in, no, we're not going to go back.
I'd like to comment one more time. I never said, do not revitalize there. That was never said, okay? The residents that live in housing deserve this many years ago when they were collecting the Community Development Block Grant, because that's where that money was supposed to go, but didn't. It was supposed to go to lead, and it was supposed to go to blighted areas. When I got the Phase One testing back through FOI, because nobody had gotten it, the planning and zoning never had it, because it wasn't willfully given, I got it. And I went to each and every one of the 144 families that lived in there, and I put a notice on their doorstep, so they knew that there was lead. They knew that there was asbestos that they were living in, and mold. And I got a, following that, I got a letter from the Housing Authority, their lawyer, banning me from the property. So please, don't say I don't care about people, because I do care about people. These buildings should have been up to code long ago. This is a thought process now. They should have been thought of years ago, not now.
Mr. Logano.
Good morning. Thank you again. My name is Chris Logano, and I live in Millbrook. I'm here on behalf of the Millbrook Owners Association. I just want to clarify one comment. I was here two weeks ago before you guys, and we did not have any information at that time as to Quarry No. And myself and Mr. Ripman and another resident, we did meet with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mardule on Monday. They were kind enough to go over the plans with us. And they were kind enough to listen to our concerns as well, and they were very receptive to that. But I just want to clarify that, you know, apparently the Quarry No plans were first developed in 2006. And between the 2006 or 2008 period, I think they did meet with the Millbrook Owners Association and the board back then, but that was, you know, four presidents ago, and that was some time ago. They have not yet met with the current board that's in place now. And we invite them to do that, and we would like to sit down and go over that as well with them. But just to suggest that they've met with us, the current board, that has not taken place yet at all. And we do have our concerns that we've expressed, which I think you said are probably better for planning and zoning in wetlands. But I just want to clarify that there has been no meeting with the current board of the Owners Association yet.
Thank you. And just, just for edification, would it be fair to say that, again, conceptually, you're not opposed to their modernizing their facility? Modernizing, meaning?
Right.
New, new buildings, but you'd like to be more informed as to the specifics of it?
I would probably, yes, I would agree with that. I'm a little hesitant, because we have not yet met as a board to actually discuss the whole proposal. But I think we understand and, and understand the need to redevelop the Quarry No One site with respect to those cottages that are there, to provide some better housing for, for the residents. So I think conceptually, you know, we understand and probably can agree with that. It's just as to the size and the scope of the buildings that will be overlooking Millbrook, how the screen, you know, the flood drain, you know, those kind of problems that we just don't know yet about. But conceptually, I think we're probably in agreement that, yes, something probably does need to be done there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to apologize. This is my last comment. If the gentleman thought I was inferring that I met with him, I did not, other than 2006, 2007, 2008, back then. But as I told them, and I, it's still true, we don't have a plan. That's why we haven't met with them. We have a conception, and we're willing to work with them, absolutely. And so, you know, they're neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We have no problem with that. But when you want to work with us, that's different than opposing us and saying that, you know, no matter what, I don't want this. And we're willing to do whatever it takes to make the neighbors happy, and I've told them that. And I'm sincere in that comment. And, and we will. We don't want to affect them. We're good neighbors. We have been. You don't see people who live next door to any of our properties coming over here complaining often, because we actually do take care of our properties as much as we can. So again, we will be good neighbors. We will do everything possible. We're going to design buildings that makes, you know, that makes sense to us, and hopefully makes sense to the neighbors as well. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. If there's not any other comment, who's that? Joan?
Yes.
Welcome.
I live at Quarry No, and I know that the buildings could be improved upon, but you're always talking about green space in this town, and we have beautiful green space at Quarry No. Couldn't those buildings just be renovated, instead of knocking them down, making people move, and then who knows how long it would take for them to move back?
I think, I think the, the facts are that there's a finite number. We've just went through a whole period where we talked about, we have a deficit of housing options for people of, of limited means, a spectrum of income means, and the direction is to look, where could one add to it? And naturally, it's on the properties that they own. So I don't think your desire for green space is mutually exclusive to any type of redevelopment. That's something that planning and zoning is going to require, as they do of all developments, is set asides for conservation space. And that's a legitimate point, I think, as they develop their concept further, that that be brought into play. I mean, there's now, there's now developments with green roofs. We've seen some modernized new development down on Old Track, where they actually have the upstairs is like an open space area for people. So there's a lot that can be incorporated, and I think that type of suggestion is a valid one, and one that they should work with you and work with Millbrook to achieve. I think we can endorse, or not endorse, any particular element, but it's really outside our purview to make that happen, other than to express our point of view, which I think we've done very well today, what we like, what we don't like, what we expect. But this really is about, and I come back to the concept, because as Mr. Littback said, and I think he's right, there's no, there's no, you know, definition on the MI. Each board may look at MI differently.
Right.
You know, each person may look at it differently, and we're not the first ones. I just basing it upon my experience and on what we went through in planning that, we need to move things forward to get further light of day. This is not the end. It's frankly just the beginning, and this is likely going to take several, I'm going to say, years by the time it goes through the town regulatory processes. But if we do nothing, then this just delays further what I think everyone agrees is a need.
Right. But anybody who comes to Quarry No for the first time, they cannot believe how beautiful it looks. I mean, the buildings themselves could use improvement, but just the general concept of it. Now, if you're going to put up big buildings, I think that'll, you know.
That's a fair point.
With all the development on Elm Street, I don't know how this could all, we only have one little entrance going in and out, you know.
All legitimate points. That, that will have to be factored into P&amp;Z as they address the increase in density, as they look at traffic counts, and they hire traffic engineers. And I think they won't get to that if we just do nothing. Those are all things that have to happen. They're going to be required to.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and it's nice to see you.
Sorry to see you leave, Peter.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Ms. Ring?
I don't think anybody in this community is opposed to more housing for poor people. This proposal is not housing for poor people. That is what is wrong with it. And we have 7,500 people who are in the working poor class. We have 124 poor families on a list right now, the, the number provided by the Housing Authority. Housing needs to be for those poor people. I know that the Housing Authority has gone to bid based upon state funding for the rehab of three of the buildings at Armstrong Court, and I don't know, and we have heard nothing about there having been to the state for funding and been rejected. We've heard nothing about that. To allow this to go forward on the basis of almost all the units being at a $3,300 rent is, that's their proposal. That's their, the answers they gave to this board. And, and five units to be affordable, it's, it's preposterous, and it's extremely upsetting. I live so far away from this area. The only reason I am here is because we need to help the poor. This is not okay.
Thank you for your opinion on that. Finally, we have, we've got now.
This is conceptual, though. This is, this is very interesting, because I'm actually on the Legislative Committee for the State of Connecticut, ConNaro, and I'm also on Legislative Committee for NARO, National Association of Housing Redevelopment Organizations. And it's very interesting, because some people view housing authorities as, as a social service agency. We're not. We're, we're not. We're a housing authority, and that's the problem. And so, we are, our mission, if you look at the mission of every housing authority in the country, is to provide safe and affordable housing, period. Safe and affordable housing, not the lowest. We service the people that are within the community, and that's what we're doing. We're trying to en service the entire community, not just one part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I had begun to move a motion on the first item A for referral. A referral is just that. It's sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have a set number of days in which to act, and that is where they'll be requested to produce an answer. I'm sure all of these questions further, and then some, obviously will have the benefit of this record, but as Ms. DeLuca said, the set aside was an important component of it. She's happy to hear that you're looking to do that. And again, she also said the concept is, she believes the board approves the concept, the general concept. So, I've made that motion. Is there a second to it?
Second. And the reason I'm seconding it is because I also struggle with the concept of MI like Mr. Littback. But I've come to the conclusion that MI is a starting point, and this is a starting point. There are the different organizations with the town, within the town of Greenwich's departments that are much, that are very, very qualified to answer all of the objections that have been raised during these three meetings, and therefore I support going forward with the Housing Authority's proposals.
Since I will be the lone vote against it, I just want to explain that my vote, first of all, has nothing to do with whether there are or not contaminants, whether there are or not traffic issues, whether the property is or isn't the right thing. That's for others to decide. My vote is based on three things. Number one, as we've discussed, the MI process itself. I struggle, as Peter admits he does, and as John does, with what the purpose is. I have concluded that there must be some reason we're sitting here, spending all this time. Otherwise, we're just a monument to an ineffective process. So what is the purpose? I think the purpose is to get the facts. I think the purpose is to be able to lay out the facts, so that when and if it moves on to the next level, the facts have been exploited. That leads to my. been exploited. That leads to my problem, and why I'm not going to vote for this. Number one, I'm disturbed, although I don't know that by itself it would have led me to vote no, the fact that there are only five units out of 51 at Armstrong Court. If we're really trying to deal with needs in this town for affordable housing, five out of 51 doesn't sound like the right number to me. That, however, is not necessarily the only basis or the basis on which I have a problem. My real problem is, as I tried to say, is that I don't believe we have the facts to know that we're even dealing with the problem that we purport to be dealing with. We purport to be addressing the need for senior housing. We don't know, at almost $40,000 a year, that's what these units will cost for a one-bedroom apartment, I don't know whose need that fulfills, who those people are, how many of them there are, how many we are not addressing, how many we are addressing. And I understand, and I take it face value, the Housing Authority's point, that to know that, they would have to spend some money to get the answers, and they don't want to do that. I think we just have a philosophical difference. To me, you do have to spend that money. It's not $600,000, it's $15,000. You do have to do that. This board deserves it. To vote without that information, I think, is not responsible, so I would vote no.
Okay. So, we have the result, two in favor, one opposed. On the second item, which is the request for referral, 50 units exist on Quarry No 1. They're seeking referral of a concept between 175 to 225 units of a mixture of elderly, affordable, and market-rate units. I'll make the motion. Second.
Great discussion, Steve.
Well, yeah, slightly different. I have two, at least two concerns here. Number one, I have had occasion to talk to people at Quarry No's, and based on what I've been told, and conceitedly, it may be incomplete information, they have not really been engaged in the process. They have not really been told. They do not really understand what is about to happen. I think that's just bad, if true, if true, that is bad process, so I have a concern with that. I guess my overall concern is back to facts. I do agree that doing something at Quarry No's is a good thing. I'm all for it. The question is, what is it that we're doing? And I don't think there's enough information for us to, again, vote. So, my problem with all of this, as I've said repeatedly, is I don't think we have the information when we vote, and I think it's important that we do. So, I will vote no.
Great, thank you. Further, further comment? Again, all I will reiterate is, if you go to the Town of Greenwich website, you put in Housing Task Force, you put in affordable housing, you will come up with the results of years' worth of work on the part of 16 well-thought-out people, that does provide the roadmap to what we're doing today, and that's why I'm moving forward with it. I've heard throughout the last several weeks, people talk about, well, they don't want committees, they don't want studies. Well, that's exactly where we went with this. We had committees, we had studies, and now we have a roadmap. So, I feel comfortable voting today, knowing that this is a very deliberative process, one that will require a multitude of meetings, citizen engagement, environmental, traffic, you name it, will be requested, and it will be costly, but required, and this is just giving the green light for you to begin doing that due diligence, so.
Can I just add one thing, Peter, to that? Because I, I don't take any exception whatsoever to the fact that there's been a Housing Task Force, that this was looked at 10 years ago, and that this is part of a process.
Seven.
Seven years ago, okay. And this is part of a process. But our job, sitting here today, in my view, is, okay, there's a process. What are the facts now, and how do they apply to the process? That's where I have a problem.
So, all in favor of the referral of the second one?
Yeah.
Two in opposed.
One.
Thank you, everyone, for your time today. And we're going to take a-
Well, thank you for your patience. We are way off schedule, way off schedule. It's not every day that we get municipal improvement requests, but nonetheless, to be respectful of your time, we'd like to just have a conversation.
Please, no.
Actually, to keep this all legal, I need a motion to go into executive session, please. Do you want me to just get a chair, or first stand here? You could, you could sit.
I'm going to come over here. What do you want?
You have to turn them off.
Oh, turn them off?
Angela Swift.
John Tiller.
John, Angela Swift.
Nice to meet you.